Call to order this regular meeting of the Beverly City Council, Monday, March 15th, 2021. Ms. Kent, could you please call the roll?
Ames? Here. Copeland?
Here.
Gudman?
Here.
Flaherty?
Yeah.
Flowers?
Here.
Hausmann?
Here.
Rand?
Here.
Rotundo?
Here.
And Guanci?
Here. Counselor Hausmann, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, Mr. President. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Hausmann. Script for remotely conducted City Council meetings, Monday, March 15th, 2021. We've been doing this one year. Smile. Thank you, Ms. Kent. Confirming member access is a preliminary matter. This is Paul Guanci, President of the Beverly City Council. Before beginning the meeting, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the City of Beverly and livestreamed by BevCam on both Channel 99 and via BevCam's YouTube channel. I am confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Thumbs up or a nod. Beautiful. Introduction to remote meeting. Good evening. This open meeting of the Beverly City Council is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspended the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as adequate alternative public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting does have public participation. We have a 7:15 public hearing on a loan authorization. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised live, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other participants or viewers may be able to see and hear you, and anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. You have the option to turn off your video if you're participating via computer. All participants should keep their microphones or phones muted unless recognized by me, the Chair, to reduce background noise and feedback. Please wait until the person speaking is finished before speaking, so we can clearly hear all participants. In addition, because of the remote meeting, I'm going to read Rule 22 of the Rules and Regulations of the Beverly City Council. Rule 22, "All subcommittees of the council shall cause records to be kept of their proceedings. They shall report by ordinance, order, or resolve unless otherwise provided by law. No subcommittee shall act by separate consultation, and no report of as a body shall be received unless agreed and subcommittee actually notified and assembled for the purpose in hand and signed by the majority of the councils of the subcommittee. Every subcommittee to which any subject matter may be referred shall report therein as soon as possible after full consideration thereof and a vote thereon. However, if the council made by majority vote order any matter pending before subcommittee to be acted upon the subcommittee at its next meeting and/or to be forth returned to the full council." For those of you that are new that are joining us, this just means that rather than break for subcommittee, we will take all of our communications and vote on them on the floor as long as six members of the council agree to do that. So now, Ms. Kent, I will ask for a roll call.
Ames? Yes. Copeland?
Yes.
Gudman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. Meeting ground rules for public hearings. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I'll invite the council to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. You may mute yourself or be muted by the meeting host by clicking the microphone mute/unmute icon, pressing the mute button on your telephone, or by pressing star 6 on your telephone keypad. Please reserve the chat function for technical difficulties and city council comments until I open the public hearing up to the public. And if you would like to speak, please type your name and address, and then I will read it and recognize you. That's it. So, we're off. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of our previous meeting. First, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the Legal Affairs Committee of the whole meeting, which was held on February 22nd, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call, Ms. Kent?
Ames? Yes. Copeland?
Yes.
Gudman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. So the meetings of our first subcommittee meeting held in over a year are accepted. Ms. Kent just reminded me that she's only done one full city council meeting in city council chambers. That's amazing. I would also entertain a motion to accept the minutes of our regular city council meeting, which was held on March 1st, 2021.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames? Yes. Copeland?
Yes.
Gudman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. We have quite a bit from His Honor Mayor Cahill, so let's go to communications from other city offices and boards.
Order number 64 from the Council President Guanci, reappointment for Mrs. Amy B. Smith from 29 Lotham Street as council representative for the Clean Energy Board.
And Miss Smith has been serving in that capacity, and she just needs to be reappointed. Any questions or comments? Hearing no questions or comments, I would ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames? Yes. Copeland?
Yes.
Gudman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. Order number 65.
Order 65 from Finance Director Brian Ailes, "Results of the city's received from its recent issuance of municipal bonds."
That is just a receive and place on file, but I would ask for a comment from Mr. Ailes, our finance director, who's here before we do that.
Sure, I'm happy to. Actually, very pleased to. As you all will read in the communication, the city received very favorable rates as a result of its public bid for the offering of roughly $38 million in bonds. The bonds were previously authorized for the construction of the police station, as well as the final bonding for the middle school project. So the rates the city received was 1.853% for a 30-year offering, which is very favorable and is directly tied to our strong bond rating.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Any questions or comments from Mr. Ailes? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to receive order number 65 and place it on file.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames? Yes. Copeland?
Yes.
Gudman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. Let Ms. Kent, let's go to communications, applications, and petitions.
Order number 66, "Delivery License Renewal and a Name Change for American Limousine LLC. DBA is RMA Worldwide Chauffeur Transportation from 100 Cummings Street." And this was formerly the TriStar Vehicle Leasing, and they were approved under that name. They're just coming basically for a name change.
Okay, Mr. Andrew Ty is here from that company. Do you want to make a comment before we take action on your license?
No, just that, you know, we were just looking for a name change, and I was new to the role because of, obviously, our industry has been impacted greatly over the past year. No one's traveling, so our reduction in staff, as well as the number of vehicles that we have, has greatly reduced. So we just want to get, we just want to be, have the City of Beverly to be updated with the latest information with the vehicles, as well as the name change, and that's why I'm here today.
Thank you, Mr. Ty. Any questions or comments from members of the Council Hausmann?
Yeah, Mr. President, I just want to report that I spoke with Mr. Ty this afternoon after reviewing the application, asked a number of questions about the corporate filings and the various different parties and the transactions, and I was completely satisfied with his answers.
That's great. Thank you, Counselor Hausmann. I forget now that you're Chair of Legal Affairs. Good stuff. Doing what you do all day long. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the license.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames? Yes. Copeland?
Yes.
Gudman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. Ms. Kent, let's go. Thank you, Mr. Ty, for being here. Much appreciated.
Thank you very much.
All right. Good luck. Let's go to reports from committees, Ms. Kent.
Okay, from Legal Affairs, order number 48. It was appointment for Constable Lev Sokolowski at 23 Wood Grove Avenue, Mass., and I believe he's on the meeting tonight.
Right, and the committee approved the appointment, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Mr. Sokolowski, do you have anything to add before we take a vote on your appointment, your constable appointment?
The committee didn't approve it because there wasn't a meeting.
Oh, I thought this would, they took care of this when they took care of the other.
No, this wasn't one of them.
Is it a reappointment?
No.
It's not a reappointment. So would anybody like to ask Mr. Sokolowski a question? Lev, you with us? Hit the microphone button. Mike Collins has joined the meeting, our Director of Public Services. Yes, working on the microphone issue. Thank you, Lev. Why don't we come back to this? Ms. Kent, are you okay with that? Because we're right about it, our public hearing time? Lev's left. He's going to fix that. Okay. So we'll come back to reports from committees. Now, okay. Now let's go to our public hearing scheduled at 7:15 on order number 44. Ms. Kent, could you please read that?
Order number 44, "Order that the City Council of the City of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, March 15th, 2021 at 7:15 p.m., remote on Google Meet, livestream on BevCam. Order that the city appropriates the sum of $750,000 to pay cost of designing and replacing the turf athletic field at the Beverly High School located at 100 Sawyer Road, Beverly, Mass. And for payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and to meet said appropriations, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said sum under Master General Law Chapter 44 or any other enabling authority, and that the mayor is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project. Any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approval by this votes, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by the vote and accordance to Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount." And this was in the newspaper on March 5th, 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. I know we have Finance Director Brian Ailes and Mayor Cahill from the administration, Bruce Doyd, the Director of Parks and Recreation, is also here, as is the council's budget analyst, Jerry Perry. Why don't we go to Mr. Ailes first?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everybody. I'll briefly just kind of touch on the financial aspects of this request, and then I'm sure we're going to get into the merits of the project, why we feel it's needed, and Commissioner Collins is here as well to speak to some of the kind of the technicalities of the turf replacement process. However, this request is for $750,000 authorization, and effectively, it's a loan order, so there's no cash that currently transfers hands. What we're requesting is that the council authorize us to begin the work to proceed with the replacement of the turf field at the high school. We're anxious to get this rolling because we're hoping to get the work done in this coming off-season, which is the summer when the turf field is least used and the school is out of session. So with this approval tonight, we could get going on that, and like I said, the work would likely be done, hopefully be done, I should say, over the course of this coming summer, at which point we would return upon free cash certification to the council and request that they transfer money from the free cash balance that is certified next year to pay off this loan authorization, so that we ultimately don't actually borrow for the project. We would be using next year's free cash funds to pay for the project. So that's kind of the technicalities of the financial aspect of it, but I'll turn it over to the mayor, and he can probably speak to the project specifics a little bit more detailed. Thank you.
Mr. Ailes? Mayor Cahill?
Thank you, Mr. President. So yes, as you know, we are bringing this forward with a request that you folks approved the funding, as Mr. Ailes just described. The turf field was originally built in 2010. The expected life cycle of a surface, a playing surface, is eight to 12 years. We are starting year 11 this spring. Actually, the spring started early with the fall 2 season, a unique fall 2 season because of COVID, so the football teams are out there practicing and playing on the high school turf field this season. The regular spring season is going to start in April, so it's got a lot of use coming up on it now and through the spring. When we originally built the field, there was a subsurface drainage system built, and then the field was put on the surface, was put on top of it. The goal in building the field initially was that the subsurface drainage system would last through a couple of life cycles of playing surfaces at least, and in fact, that subsurface system is in good condition, so we don't need to do anything with it. As I said, the playing surface is at the end of life. It's life expectancy. I think some of you may have seen, I guess, late last week, some pictures of the DPS crew out repairing some tears in the playing surface to try to make sure that it gets through this, you know, this late winter, early spring, and through the spring season, and make sure that it's a safe playing surface for the time that we need to keep using it. The, I mean, there's nothing unusual about this. It's time for this surface. You know, we've been asked why, you know, why artificial turf and why now? The reality is that in a community our size, we need at least two or more artificial turf surfaces to meet the needs of all of the kids and adults who want to be active out in these fields. The amount of money that we're asking you approve is $750,000. It would be great if the bids come in below that, but even if they don't, we know it's been well established that in a New England climate, you get roughly three times as many hours of use out of an artificial turf playing surface as you do out of a natural grass field during the course of a calendar year. That's because there are more weeks you can use it later into the late fall towards winter and from the late winter, in this case, with this year, late winter, early spring, right on through. You also have many days in, you know, within the usable months of the year where the weather would put you off a grass field because it's, you know, it's just, it's unplayable for the, for the time that the storm is happening. It can often be unplayable for a day or two after, particularly at the high school campus where the subsurface is clay and it has, you know, it has problems draining. That's just, those are the natural soils there. So the need for this artificial turf surface is huge. There are thousands of kids every year who play on our two artificial turf fields, from a number of youth sports to all of our school sports, and then you just think about the unprogrammed time on these fields where you have groups of friends play, you have families down there, individuals down there, all getting out and exercising and being active in the space. So now, I think in every way, it is an investment that's in the best interest of the community at large, and it gets so, so much use. It's just, you know, it would always be nice to not have to spend money on things, but certainly this one is, any way that you look at it, a sound investment. The improvements in safety that'll come with replacing the field and replacing the 2010-era field with a 2021 field. The improvements in technology are significant. We will be, with your approval, with your funding, we will be adding a, what's known as a shock pad, a pad underneath the playing surface, and there's not one at the high school field now. There is one at the newer middle school field. So a shock pad, and then the infill is, you know, vastly improved over the infill that was used 11 years ago. We'll be looking at a, something that's known as an Enviro Fill type of filling with, what we have at the middle school is gel-coated sand pellets in there as opposed to the crumb rubber that's in the high school field. And then the playing surface itself, they've made, you know, significant improvements over the last decade in the playing surfaces. So there are some thoughts. I'm sure you have questions. I don't know if, you know, maybe Commissioner Collins wants to share a thought or two before we get to questions?
That would be great. Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Commissioner Collins, please.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for having me. So really, the replacement of the field, how do you know when it's time? And it's pretty obvious if you walk out on that field that you can tell that it's time. The current version of the field that we have, it depends, the safety of it relies on, if you think of, it relies on the rubber pellets that are on the surface. There's the blend of rubber and sand, but the cushion that you feel as you walk across it comes from the rubber. And if you think of like a hairbrush standing up with the spines of that brush facing up, you can fill in those spines with rubber and you can provide a nice cushion. Well, over time, if you keep stepping on that hairbrush, the bristles are going to bend over, and the depth of the rubber is going to get lower and lower, to the point where we can't really support the depth of rubber that we need. And that's the situation we have in the field now, is those poor little tusks of grass, the artificial turf have, you know, they lead a hard life. They're getting stepped on. They're in the hot sun all day. So they've sort of given up, and if you go on the field, you can look, and you see they're all curled up. When the field was first delivered, they're all standing in a tension, nice and straight, and we were able to put a good two inches of rubber and sand on that surface. So now, that field, you know, because of the condition of the individual blades themselves, we can't support a safe, really safe playing surface for much longer. We've done, we've done two different style of tests, one that is common to the U.S. and one that's common in the professional leagues in Europe that is not yet common in the U.S., but we wanted to compare the two, and both say that the playing field is currently safe to play on, but it's really at the end of life. And the photos that were shared with you earlier really tell that story. And as we all know, now, the way that kids get out and they get their exercise is very much through organized sports, much more than it was when I was a kid, when you were a kid. Where organized sports were, they were a thing, but not like it is now. It is really all-encompassing, and so this becomes a really critical part of what we provide in terms of recreation and physical fitness for our children these days. So this really becomes an important asset. And as the mayor said, if we wanted to replicate this in grass, in natural grass, which is great, we really love natural grass field, and that's one thing actually we're really good at, is doing natural grass, but we would be required to resaw that field a couple of times a season completely if you had that level of play on it. And one goes out there and plays in the rain, your grass field's done for the season. You have to replace it. There's no coming back from that. So it's really, in New England, given the miserable weather we typically have, this is a critical asset, and it's absolutely time now to replace the turf. So we appreciate your support in getting that done.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, or Commissioner Collins. Before I go to questions from the city council, I'll ask our Director of Parks and Recreation, Bruce Doyd, if he wanted to make a comment or two.
Thank you for having me as well. Again, I'll just echo whatever Brian and Mayor Cahill and Mr. Collins just said. That field is 10 years old. It seems like we just put it in yesterday, but, you know, it does get a lot of use. It has had a lot of abuse sometimes with the number of uses and activities on the field, but, you know, it's definitely time. I mean, again, it's not unusual. If you look at the original turf field at Endicott College, it had similar lifespan. The original turf field at Bishop Femwick had, again, the same type of lifespan. And I remember that because when we first went to the Super Bowl in 2010, our field was not ready yet, but we practiced at Bishop Femwick, and we practiced at Endicott, and those fields were not that old, and they were already in very tough shape. So our field has reached that level, and again, we need your support to help us get it back to a safe, long-lasting playing surface, because it does get a lot of use. And again, most of, 95% of the people who use that field are Beverly schoolchildren, either high school athletes or middle school, elementary school athletes who are playing on youth sports teams. And so again, it's all benefiting our kids on our field, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doyd. All right, we'll go to, I know we'll hear from our budget analyst, Mr. Jerry Perry, a little later in the public hearing to talk about the financing, but let's go to members of the council. And first up, we have Counselor Todd Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to say that I'm definitely in support of this. It does definitely need to be needed and replaced. My question is, thank you, first of all, for kind of pivoting instead of going for the free cash, but going towards the loan order, but your opinion, or have you gotten a good sense that $750,000 is enough? Could it be that we have cost overruns next year, that you may have to come to the council again to ask for a little bit more money, which would then have to come through free cash? I'm just trying to say, is the figure conservative? Is it within range? I know you just said that the middle school field was done, but that was also two years ago that was bid out, or three years ago. Costs have gone up in the last year or so, so I'm just kind of looking at into the future. You know, like I said, first off, I'm in favor of the project. I like the fact of how you went to the loan order, but going next year, if you find that there's a cost overrun, would there be a need to go into free cash for that?
I can, I can field that one.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes.
Sure. So we developed the budget from a couple of different pieces of input. Obviously, Commissioner Collins has had conversations with certain engineers that do this type of work. We also know what some recent other fields have costs for this type of work. And then looking at our more recent middle school project, we know that that particular rug and infill and pad cost us at the time about $640,000, $650,000 of the total cost of installation. And so if you pick that up and put it over at the high school campus, it's a slightly smaller surface, I believe. Mr. Collins, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the one at the middle school is rated for soccer play, and the one at the high school is a little narrower, so there might be some cost savings there. To answer your question, if we do have overruns, if they're small overruns, we may be able to absorb it within an operating budget, but I would always hate to foreclose the chance that, excuse me, there may be a need to come back before the council. But at this point, we think we're sufficiently covered with the $750,000 project. In fact, we'd like to turn some of that back if the bids come in under.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Counselor Flaherty?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Rotundo, those are some good questions. I just want to go on the record of saying, I understand, I've gone through this just recently with our YMCA. We just put a turf field in, so I can understand the safety aspect. That's the biggest piece here. The administration's done a good job explaining where the money's coming from, especially in this situation where the average taxpayer could say, why are we spending $750,000 during this situation during COVID? So I think all those questions have been, in our meetings, were answered from a safety standpoint and from a financial standpoint. The one thing that I would, and I don't think this under the DPW, but the one thing that I do have concerns with is this, and I did talk to the mayor a little bit about this, is I like to see a long-term plan that our whole facility... and I did talk to the mayor a little bit about this, is I like to see a long-term plan that our whole facility, uh, moving forward and then in the years to come. And then secondly, the, it's not only the turf, but also the track is protecting that area. Cause I do know that it is an open area and you want the public to use it. But the, uh, there are a lot of people who utilize that, who, you know, have their lawn chairs in the middle of the track during a hot day. And, uh, and it, and it's no cover for the track. Um, but then also the field itself, you have people utilizing it that probably don't have permits. Um, I don't know what the right answer is to do that because you can't police it 24/7. But it, I would like to see a little more proactive approach from the schools or somehow to, um, to try to see what we can do to protect that field. So it could last longer and be a, a, a better situation for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Uh, Council Flowers.
Thank you very much, President Guanci. Um, I just have a few questions if that's okay.
Of course.
So at first I just wanted to, and anybody putting me on the calls, welcome to answer this. But just especially for people who might be listening at home, um, a question that I've gotten, I just want to clarify. And I think it might be helpful for people to hear. Um, there's been some questions about, that I've received about why the school side of the budget doesn't absorb this cost, why it's coming sort of to us. And so I just want to clarify my own understanding. Is this fair to say, um, that the, the schools don't have within their budget, a capital project sort of line item? So capital expenditures on our school buildings and properties, our city expenses. Is that fair to say, Mr. Ailes? I guess that's sort of a question. Or Mr. Mayor?
Sure. Thanks, Council. I'll go first, Mr. Ailes. You can help me if I trip up here. So Mr. Ailes says many times, and he's spot on, that, you know, there's not a school in a city. There's, there's money that, that, that we all collectively have to work with to deliver the critical services that people count on. This, this is officially property of the recreation department. That is, that was necessitated by the fact that when we built this field 11 years ago, it was in part from a state grant that had to be, um, that only went out through recreation departments. So it actually is, 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 is under the control of the recreation department. But more, you know, more than that, you know, we, we typically address capital needs of the school department through the city budget. And, you know, to do, to do any differently here, as you said, there's not a capital line in the school budget. So, you know, given that it really is all the same set of resources. And, you know, this is an important asset, certainly for our high school athletic programs and for our youth programs and for the, the greater communities, um, you know, more informal use at so many times. Uh, that it, it certainly fits within, you know, the, the, I'd say the, the, the overall umbrella of, of city resources to address.
Thank you. That, that matches what I had understood to be the case, but I think sometimes it's just, it's helpful for us as we're talking about things for, um, for the public watching at home to also be able to hear us sort of flush that out. So I thank you for, um, flushing that out with me. Another question that I had, and I, um, just wanted to sort of, as we're thinking forward about the loan authorization, um, it doesn't preclude our finding, um, grants. I know Ms. Barrett's on here and so we know she's excellent at bringing in money through grants. So a loan authorization would not preclude our finding other sources of funding, whether it was grants or gifts that might come into the city from a directed donation that would potentially defray the cost of future free cash to the city. Is that correct? So the decision we make tonight doesn't mean that we, in the end, may not find other funding sources that would defray the cost to the free cash?
Mr. Ailes, I mean, I, it sounds right.
That's correct.
Okay. And if I, if I may, Mr. President, um, can I ask one more question?
Of course.
Thank you. Um, I was curious about, I know, I know many of our outside, what we might call outside in terms of non-high school student athlete users. As Mr. Mayor, you just alluded to and, and Mr. Doig, they are some of our other younger athletes and, um, residents. But I'm wondering, are there any times when there are outside users who are charged a user fee for that field? And, and I guess where I'm going with that is if so, and I would maybe lump the middle school field in too, for a long term. Because I, I concur with everything that was said, you know, in my own reading and what you've said and my own reading about turf fields. Ours is certainly at the end of its usable life. Um, and that's not through, you know, anything that's been done wrong to it. It's just it's been played. And, um, so I'm thinking we know that that will happen again to both our fields. So I, I guess sort of where I'm going is, is there a possibility of establishing a fund that could be fed by the user fees of, of the turf fields that could then support future work on the turf fields? Is that something we would ever consider? So they could sort of feed themselves in a way?
So I'm, I'm, thank you, Council. I'm, I'm going to say something quickly, then let, uh, Mr. Doig give you a little more detail on, on what comes in. And then Mr. Ailes, you, you can probably tackle that last part. So we have such heavy demand for use of those fields right on through the year from our own school programs and from our own youth programs, that there aren't a lot of opportunities for income. You know, because priority is given to our own kids. But that said, Mr. Doig can tell you about a couple of organizations that do pay, uh, to use, to use our fields, be they turf or grass. And why don't you, why don't you answer the rest of that if you would, Mr. Doig?
Sure. Um, as the mayor said, you know, the amount of time that's available on the high school field is minimal for renting. Uh, there might be a few hours on a Saturday or a Sunday. Uh, there might be some time in the summer, but that's when most groups are not playing as much. But we do have a permanent policy in place. It's been in place since 2003 that distinguishes Beverly based, uh, adult organizations, Beverly based youth organizations. And the youth organizations, uh, don't pay or have not been paying to use the fields at all. And the adult organizations paid initially originally $10 an hour for usage of a field. But it's not a lot of money for the Beverly based youth organizations and adult organization. Non-resident leagues, we base it on percentage. If it's less than, uh, 85%, but more than 50%, they would pay $25 an hour. And this is a grass fields. And they, if it was, um, under 50%, then they would pay $40 an hour. For-profit organizations like football camps, soccer camps, things like that would pay $50 an hour. The turf fields, when it went in, we started, uh, charging $125 an hour. But again, we don't get a lot of people that, um, want to pay that amount or are playing at the times that the field is actually available. So, um, we don't bring in a lot of money each year in terms of, uh, usage fees for our turf fields because of time availability. We bring in more for our softball fields and, and, uh, baseball fields that are rented by groups that need, that want to play in a sandy park. For example, the Coed Softball League, the Women's Softball League and so forth, you know, pay upwards of $10,000 a year total, uh, for light fees and use field usage. That doesn't happen with the long fields. But our policy, we, we are in the process, we've revised it to actually increase the fees. And we, you know, we need to get that out to people to review and approve. But, um, I did a survey of, uh, 40 cities and towns around, and again, a lot of cities and towns do charge a lot more than we do. Even their own in-town youth organizations. So we take a long look at that. But in terms of the artificial turf fields, um, as I said earlier, between the high school having practices every day in the spring from three o'clock to six o'clock, that only gives us about an hour in the evening for the, uh, the youth organizations to get on the fields in, at the time of year. And then the same thing in the fall, uh, you've got a lot of teams that are practicing and playing at both locations. There's just not a lot of time to rent, but, uh, and the youth organizations use it almost all day on Saturday and Sunday, uh, both in the spring and the fall. So, uh, you know, we, we're doing what we can to raise money, but, um, but also, you know, we did, um, get the $500,000 grant back 11 years ago, plus the $350,000 of fundraising to build the field. But as the mayor said, that field had to be transferred from the school department to the recreation department, uh, to get the grant. But the recreation department doesn't really use it very much. In fact, I think the senior center is doing a walking club down, uh, down there now for the seniors. And, uh, we don't actually run programs there because we can't even get time on this, on the field. So, um, so again, you know, there's not a lot of opportunity, but we're doing the best we can and happy to do more, happy to raise fees if people feel the fees should be raised. So I can share that information with everybody and see what you feel about the fees that we're charging now.
Thank you, Mr. Doig. Council Flowers.
Thank you. Miss, uh, Mr. Ailes, I don't know if you were, if you had anything you want to say about the idea of a fund to feed the turf fields. Um, that was, that would be sort of the tail end of my question. And then that, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah. So, um, I can, we can certainly research the specifics more. However, generally, um, we're not able to legally set aside funds through the general fund for specific purposes that will happen in the future, because it effectively would circum, circumvent the appropriation process, which is the responsibility of your body, the city council. And so by doing that, you're tying the hands of a future council potentially with general fund revenues. And, and the law generally doesn't allow that. There are some exceptions. On the school side, the monies they take in for field rentals can be put into a revolving fund that is statutorily authorized separately, that they can then use to fund costs associated with what generated the, the revenues. So it, it's yes and no.
Thank you. No, that, I understand that actually. So thank you. That was very helpful. I appreciate, I appreciate your time, all of you and the answers. And, you know, I think as other councils have said, I'm, I'm at the point where I feel that we have this asset. It is at the end of its life. We know that our student athletes and others, um, will be safer playing on an, on a repaired field. So I think the question before us is just, you know, figuring out how we, how we fund getting that work done. But I, I feel like now knowing that the field is at the end of its playable life, I, I personally would not feel like I want to continue to ask our student athletes, uh, to play and potentially be at risk on a field now that we know that it's at the end of its playable life. So I appreciate, I appreciate this chance to learn more about it and I appreciate your answers. And as you can tell from my questions, probably I'm intrigued to think about creative, uh, creative ways to keep funding that work that's needed to be done. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Flowers. Great questions and very helpful answers. Uh, Council Ames.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I have, um, a few questions. Most of them have already been asked and answered surrounding the budget for this field. So there is some historical and actual work that's been done on the budget, which is good to know. And, um, I too believe I, you know, when Mr. Collins said it's absolutely time to fix this field, I concur 100%. I think for me, it's about process and it's about understanding who the stakeholders are in this field and figuring out where, where the funds to repair this field come from. And so my, uh, first question is just to dig in a little more. Is the, um, administration going to continue to look for grants? Are there potential grant opportunities out there to cover some of the, um, costs here?
Or Mr. Ailes or Mayor Cahill?
So I'll, I'll speak to the, kind of the broader question of, of fundraising for some of our city needs. And then maybe Mr. Ailes, I know has some historical context on, on the original, uh, effort to build this field 11 years ago. I, I think the timing is a real challenge right now with, with, you know, with where we are with COVID and the fact that we need to build this field now. I, I know that we have some significant larger cost items that could well be the subject of fundraising campaigns that we would, you know, we would undertake collectively in the future. For example, we know that the Lynch Park Carriage House is going to need close to $5 million to, to, to renovate. We know that there's a comparable amount that'll need to go into the golf and tennis clubhouse. We also, and, and Councilor Flaherty mentioned this earlier, you know, there's, there's still a kind of a, a long hoped for, uh, high school stadium at the high school, which is a, last time we looked at numbers was a five to $7 million need. And so these are not things that are going to happen overnight, uh, nor are the things that we're really in a place economically that it's, it's optimal to, to try to launch into any efforts. I would say, as, as I said earlier, um, when, when you look at all of the benefits that this asset provides, I think it, you know, it, it holds up to, to any way, you know, any different way you could look at the money needed to do it. I think, um, I, I, I will say this, I really do appreciate the thinking and the questions. My, my hope is that that type of, uh, fundraising enthusiasm and, and, and capabilities that we might be able to bring to bear collectively might go to one of these larger projects that we know is in the offing. Mr. Ailes, I know you, go ahead. Sorry, Counselor.
No, that, I appreciate all that. Um, my thinking here is that you have some stakeholders already in this field. You know, that exist. You have, uh, that gave money a decade ago to build this field. And I was wondering if you had contacted them and, um, if that, because this is their field already. That is, that's the first thing. And also you have other organizations that have supported this field and you also have enterprise funds. And, you know, Mr. Perry just last year was urging towards, you know, doing it this way. And I can appreciate him changing his mind, but you know, I, I have a friend who's a, a good friend who's a para in the high school and makes, has worked there doing lovely work for 20 years. And when I told her about this, Ward Six resident, Mr. Counsel Copeland, she, she said, "That's insulting." Because she could speak, she could, and she said it quietly, not with anger, but just like, "I don't earn much money with the BA dealing with kids with challenges all day." Has been in school since August for what she does. And I know, you know, as a former football and wrestling mom, how hard we worked to raise money for those programs and that was all fine. And all I'm suggesting is that perhaps we owe it to the people in our community just to spend our dollars and put our heart into these projects equally. That is, that is my, um, only observation here really, the bottom line with it, Mr. Mayor, respectfully.
Mr. Ailes, I think I'll, I'll ask you to touch on the, the, um, enterprise fund, the suggestion that that might be a resource and, and also the, um, some of the context that, that, that you supplied, talking with me earlier about the dynamics in the city back when the field was first built.
Sure. Um, so the, the, the first piece that you mentioned, uh, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Ames, around the enterprise fund, um, funding. I can't speak for Mr. Perry. I'm sure he's going to, um, elaborate on this a little bit. But back a year ago, year and a half ago, when we were certified our, uh, enterprise fund balance, it was certified at a level of about $340,000. Uh, the pandemic hit, uh, and this council with, with the request of the mayor transferred about $150,000 from that enterprise fund balance to support ongoing operations. So that at the end of FY '20, uh, the balance was certified at just about $188,000. So, uh, what that fund usually helps us do is leverage grant opportunities in many cases for larger projects. And so we'll look to the, the recreational enterprise fund to maybe cover a 10 or a 20% match on a much larger project and basically get more bang for our buck out of that fund. Um, and so we don't want to kind of hamstring ourselves by drawing that balance too low that we wouldn't be able to access it in the future for some additional recreational purposes. Camp Paradise is a perfect example that comes to mind. That recreational enterprise fund helped to make that purchase possible. Um, and so that's kind of why we don't look to that fund in this particular case. That's not to say it's not something we could consider for a different, uh, purpose. As for the, for the second piece around the fundraising and the grants for the initial turf replacement about 10 years ago, the city was in a very, very different financial place at that point in time. When the talks began, we're talking about FY '08 timeframe, um, the city had no stabilization fund balance and certified a free cash balance of negative $3 million. So they didn't have any money. And then going forward, FY '09 through FY '11, over a three-year fiscal period, the operating budget only grew by 0.4% cumulatively over three years. And that's because state aid was getting cut drastically on the tail end of a recession. And so the city really had no option. If it wanted this field, it had to look elsewhere. We're in a different situation now because of the decisions this council has made, this administration has made around, uh, being financially prudent with the resources that we have. And the resources that we have are taxpayer dollars. And the resources that we have are taxpayer dollars, and this asset will be a taxpayer asset that they can use indefinitely. Well, I shouldn't say indefinitely, but for the life of the of the property. So uh, we really see it as as the most appropriate use um of resources in that regard. Hope that helps a little bit.
Counselor.
It certainly does. It certainly does help. Um, uh, not sure enough, but it's I really appreciate, you know, this conversation across the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ames. Uh, any other questions or comments from members of the city council? Slow on the button, anybody? I'm gonna open it up to members of the public. Are there any members of the public that wish to make a comment or ask a question on order number um 44, the loan authorization for the $750,000 to facilitate replacement of the turf field at Beverly High School campus? Okay, I have nobody from the public that wishes to ask a question or make a comment. So I'm gonna go to our budget analyst, Jerry Perry, to uh talk about this for a few minutes. Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Hope everybody is well. I forwarded to you all last Friday afternoon a summary memorandum of my thoughts regarding this area as well as the attached uh studies that was done through Commissioner Collins for the HIC method, they call it, and the GMAX method, which I had promised you all along there. Some general thoughts, a lot of the questions be answered, but I'll I'll try to just weigh in on a few issues. Uh, Counsel Ames and a few of the others are absolutely correct. I had reservations about this project a year ago when it was being discussed. My two areas of concern with was one was financial, which I get into in a minute, which has been discussed. And the other was, did we actually need the field? And I didn't know at that time the condition of the field or an independent review of that. With regard to the finances, I think uh I've discussed with several of you, uh, I was concerned with the amount of free cash being used this year. That was my concern. I'm always maybe a little cautious more than others with regard to the undesignated fund balance. And given our commitments with the ladder truck and um the uh police station and our normal stuff with stabilization, OPEP, what have you, I was a little worried about the amount of money being used. Uh, and I told the the mysterious about two or three weeks ago, like I didn't think I could support the finance of the free cash. During that period of time, I'm gonna blame this on Counselor Rotundo. It's his fault. He kind of put the bug in my ear about the thought process of why couldn't we do the same thing we did with the ladder truck? Where we borrowed for the ladder truck and we were gonna pay it back at a later time with new certified free cash in the future, and that certainly immediately caught my attention. I thought that was a pretty good idea, and I discussed it with Mr. Ailes, which generated, which Mr. Ailes and the mayor and Council President Quancy knows. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago to discuss this very issue. We kicked it around quite a bit, and I want to compliment both the mayor and the finance director. They came around to the thought process that uh, as I understand, the mayor wants to get this built before school starts next year, but he couldn't do it if we didn't do something. The loan order, I think, is a good idea. I like it financially. Uh, it achieves what the mayor is attempting to do in the administration as well as allows for us to pay for it through free cash next year. So I do support the loan order to the council as long as the council understands that you've got to. I would never support this as a straight out loan order to you, but I do support it for free cash consistent with our capital expenditure plan. And as such, um, as long as you understand that they'll come back later in the fall, and I'm encouraging the finance director to see if he can get that balance sheet certified and approved before we have a new council, uh, you know, after the first of the year. But uh, as long as, if you're gonna vote for the loan order, I hope you know that you also support the free cash transfer uh like in November, December next year. So I support that. The second issue was the condition of the field. I'm no turf field expert. You know, I played on some myself as a kid growing up and and coached and all that stuff like many others have. But I was pleased the mayor about two or three weeks ago through Mr. Ailes forwarded me those two tests. Those tests were done approximately 16 months ago, and even at that time, it indicated it was at the end of its useful life. So I was satisfied based on the review of that. Plus, we had some dialogue with Mr. Collins on this, that it ended its useful life. Mr. Doig was kind enough to forward a few pictures of uh the conditions of it, which helped me a little further. But I am I am satisfied now that the time has come to replace it, if that's what the prerogative of the city council is. So I do support uh the proposal as submitted by His Honor the Mayor. I would like to very briefly talk about the enterprise funds as brought up by Counselor Ames. Yes, I absolutely did discuss this a year ago. That was before we have certification of uh what is retained earnings in the enterprise funds. And the finance director was spot on. We went from $340,000 to $188,000 at the close of the past fiscal year. So we dropped quite a bit, and that grabbed my attention. We have to be careful about that. We have to protect the fund balance. You can legally use the enterprise funds for this purpose. I want to be clear on that, and that's certainly permissible under the enterprise fund regulations. However, um, given the amount of drop in in the enterprise fund retained earnings that we witnessed this year, that you certainly have seen on my reports to you all, I think the prudent approach and the wise approach is ultimately use general fund free cash down the road and uh use it through this methodology of doing the loan order for us and coming back with free cash. So the reservations I had over a year ago have been satisfied, at least to my uh satisfaction. At the end of the day, it's still your choice, as you all know, but from a budgetary perspective, I believe this is the right approach, uh, Mr. President, members of the council. And I would, uh, given all the information we have, support its adoption. And, Mr. President, I'm gonna have to answer any questions anybody may have regarding the matter.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Do any members of the council have any question, additional questions for Mr. Perry? Um, okay, Mayor Cahill, do you want to just wrap it up?
Sure. I I thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank everybody for your consideration on this. I do also want to say, in making our case that the field has reached the end of its life cycle, I want to make sure that the public understands that the kids playing on it now and throughout the spring are safe playing on it. And that's really, in large part, thanks to Commissioner Collins and and his crews. You know, they 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 worked, they worked hard to make sure that, you know, that they uh they groomed the field. They put uh, you know, more fill in and they and they make sure that it's it's they worked hard in the goal mouth areas on what, you know, what you see is by the goal line of the soccer field and the football field. At any rate, um, those fields do meet, they 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 test within the acceptable range. They're, you know, with a new field, they will test better, for sure. Uh, but, you know, they are within acceptable range. It's it's at this point, you know, it's still time and and Commissioner Collins, I don't know. Could you just take a minute to talk about some of the care that your crew is 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 needing to do now? Because I think it is important. People need to be confident in playing on it now, but understand that, you know, that at the same time, it's time for a new one.
Yeah, a lot of what the crew, a lot of what the crew is fighting with now is the way the field is constructed. It comes in 10-foot rolls and it's sewn together. And then uh they go out there with like sheet shearing scissors, and they they actually shear off some of the turf. And that's how they put the numbers in and the stripes, because as good as the manufacturing process is, you'll never get a straight line to line up on, you know, uh, 12 different rolls as you roll them out down the field. So they shear those ones in after that, and they glue and they sew those to the underlying backing. So after 10 years in the sun and people working on it, uh, that glue starts to break down. And so you start to see that the numbers and the hash marks and the and the lines, the sidelines, they they start to peel up. So what we spent a lot of time out there this week doing is um with new glue and construction adhesive, trying to glue all those um those, most of the white elements back down to the surface. There's occasional tear in the field. We'll we'll um we'll address that just by literally sewing it back together or or putting a piece of backing under it and gluing it down to the backing, almost like you'd fix a a doorknob holding on a drywall. And whereas the, you know, the current field takes a lot of grooming, which we do, and replacement of rubber, which we do, to make sure that the rubber is evenly distributed. The new field and the middle school field um gain a lot of, not all of, but a lot of its um impact resistance from the cushion below it, which will never move and it won't break down. So every day, the field will will rate basically the same. It won't degrade in as quickly or in the same manner as the current type of field. So it's a much better system, much more um much more consistent in terms of its performance. It plays a little faster, too, because we use almost exclusively sand as an infill. So I think the the players like it a little better, too. And uh, so, yeah, we're we're just, it it it, you know, the field is literally falling apart at the seams, in addition to the fact that the the individual strands of turf have um crumpled over, and it makes it harder, it makes it, it requires more maintenance on our part to keep the keep the rubber distributed and rubber and sand mixture distributed appropriately across the field. You give those heavy use areas, the 50 and the Golden Mouse, where everybody's playing and really digging in, that tends to get pushed aside, and we have to groom it and bring it back from the sides and and cover those areas. That gets a lot easier once you have new turf.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. All good? So I will close this public hearing and ask for a motion to approve Mayor Cahill's request.
Second.
Interroll call, please.
Ames?
No.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Quancy?
Yes. That carries eight to one. Thank you. So now now.
I said, "Thank you all." Sorry.
Well, again, you reminded me to thank you and your staff for being here to answer our questions. Counselors had great questions, and we had great answers. Uh, and thank you, as always, to our budget analyst, Mr. Jerry Perry, for um for always being willing to work with not only the city council but with the administration. Uh, let's go back to communications, applications, and petitions and see if Mr. Sobolowski is here.
Yes, sorry about that.
Oh, no worries. Okay. Uh, Ms. Kent, could you just read that order again?
Sure.
This is from reports from committees.
Correct. Order number 48, and it's from communication from the mayor. Appointment for constable from Mr. Lev Sobolowski, 23 Wood Revab, Newton, Mass. for constable.
All right. Um, Mr. Sobolowski, you want to uh talk about yourself and your life as a constable and what we can do to help you here in Beverly?
Yeah, so I'm currently a security guard. My hours were cut. I have a few colleagues who are constables themselves, and they just say it's a good, honest way to make some extra money. And I also, I'm interested in the civil process and learning more about that. And being a constable does exactly that. So, yeah.
Thank you. Any questions from members of the city council? And Ms. Kent, Mr. Sobolowski's uh application was signed up uh by Chief LaLasha, correct?
Correct.
Uh, questions, comments, thoughts? Counsel Feldman, thank you.
Yes, I was wondering if you work with a specific um agency or for your permit? What are you, what are you using the permitting for? Are you working with a specific agency?
Um, yeah, at least for the Massachusetts constables with Chief Brian Abelli.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Hausman.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to um uh acknowledge and appreciate uh Mrs. Sobolowski's uh initiative. Uh, and uh, as an attorney, I I don't myself work o- often with constables. But, you know, it's it it is a good, honest way to to make a living and fills a fills a need in the, certainly in the legal profession. So uh, I wish you uh, wish you the best in uh in in starting uh your work as a constable. I'll I'll vote in favor of your uh appointment.
Thank you, Counsel Hausman. Uh, anybody else? All right, hearing no further questions or um, yeah, hearing no further questions or constables. No, hearing no further questions, the con comments, I want to entertain a motion to approve order number 48. Sumo.
Second.
Interroll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Quancy?
Yes. Lev, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, okay, we have left uh communications from His Honor the mayor, but I am gonna go to order number 67, which is the last one under that, so that we can all introduce ourselves or Mr. Robert Pierce can introduce himself to us. Could you read that order, Ms. Kent?
Sure. Order number 67. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint, subject to your review and recommendation, Mr. Robert Pierce of Five Old Plinter's Road, Beverly, to serve as the Beverly Democratic City Committee Representative on the Board of Registras. His term is to be effective until March 31st, 2024. Sincerely yours, Michael P.K. Hill, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill, and thank you, Ms. Kent. Ms. Kent, before you um, before we go to Mr. Pierce, can you just explain to everybody, not only the city council but people watching at home, why this is so so important?
Yes, and I talked to Mr. Pierce this morning to inform the the duties of the registrar. So on March 31st, we will have, we will be down to only two registrars, myself and Mike Murphy, who is the representative for the Republican Committee. And so for nomination papers or anything that needs to have a signature or a vote or anything like that, we need three minimum. And normally, we have four, but Ms. Fran McDonald can no longer do it. So we're down to just the two of us after March 31st. So it's important for us to get that name out there, and nomination papers will be coming out April 5th. And so I wanted to have, to make sure that we had at least three signatures for that date.
It's an election year this year?
A little election year, yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, it just, I don't know, just every day seems the same. I feel like we're still in March of 2020. And Mayor Cahill, we are looking for, uh, just to keep in the back of your head, we're looking for an appointment for you to uh fill that last spot.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I appreciate that. Do you mind if I say something about Mr. Pierce?
Of course you can. You're the mayor.
Well, no, thank you. I I just want to say, I I first met Mr. Pierce and his wife some years ago at, you know, getting active with the Democratic City Committee. And so I got I get to know them then that way first, and then as neighbors of my, one of my brothers and sisters-in-law over the years. And uh, I I just have to say, I was so happy when I saw who the Democratic City Committee was putting forward for this position, because I think Mr. Pierce is a person of absolutely utmost integrity. So this is a critically important position for somebody to bring integrity to it. You know, nothing's more important than our elections and and to know that they're done with integrity. And I'm just excited that he's the person who's before us tonight. So I want I want to thank Mr. Pierce for being willing to take this on. And you folks, I I ask you to give your utmost consideration of him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill, and I would be remiss if we didn't thank Mr. Paul Knight, who uh is no longer able to fill the role. Uh, he did it for a number of years. He brought that youthful enthusiasm to the position. So I'm sure that if he can offer any help to Mr. Pierce, he will before uh, before he takes office. Uh, Mr. Pierce, come and say hello. Unmute. Kim, we've got technical difficulties here on March 15th. Well, our goal was tonight to have Mr. Pierce introduce himself to us and talk about his uh about his background and let us know why he wants to be on the Board of Registras, so that when the Committee on Public Services meet on March 29, it'll be a really quick, brief meeting so that they can approve him. But if we can't talk to Mr. Pierce, he's gonna have to come back on the 29th, correct, Ms. Kent?
Correct, unless he can get back on tonight with volume, we can.
All right. So.
Mr. President, just a thought.
Go ahead.
Sometimes if if you leave the meeting and and come right back in, it works better. I don't know. It's
Correct.
Too scientific, but.
Mr. Pierce, oh, Todd Rotundo has left the meeting. You don't have to. Mr. Pierce is here. Boy, go to turn your volume up. No. I still can't hear you, sir.
I think like the mayor said, if you come, if you leave and come back on, it might help.
All right, Mr. Pierce, leave and try to come back on, and we'll go to another order and we'll come back. Does that sound okay, everybody? Okay. Okay. Let's go to communications from his honor, the mayor, from the top.
Order number fifty-four. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has received a thousand-dollar donation from Nancy P. Hewson. The gift is to be used for children's enlarged print books to benefit the farms branch of Beverly Public Library. Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant earmarked donations or gifts to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this donation by taking action on this matter at your meeting on March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And our Director of the Library, Allison Bevan, couldn't be here this evening, but of course she's very supportive of us accepting that donation. So I would entertain a motion to approve, to accept the donation of a thousand dollars from Nancy P. Hewson.
So moved.
Second.
Interroll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes. Order number fifty-five.
I believe Mr. Pierce is back.
Who are you? Mr. Pierce, can I hear you? Still can't hear you. Let's try again. Oh. Ms. Kent, any suggestions that you have? If Pierce is left, we're going to give him another shot.
Okay.
And we have an unlimited number of strikes, so maybe he can call in. Very good, Kathleen Feldman.
Or you can type on the chat.
We could do that also. Mr. Pierce, still can't hear you. Maybe you could call into the meeting on your phone. Okay? I cannot wait until we're back live in action at City Hall. This has gotten so old. Not that I don't enjoy seeing everybody, because I can't see you when I'm looking ahead. I have to look left or right. Now everybody's right in front of me. Order number fifty-five, Ms. Kent.
Order number fifty-five. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a twenty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-dollar grant from the Mass Department of Environmental Protections. Electric Vehicle Incentive Program Workplace Charging to install five electric vehicle charging stations located at Beverly High School. There's four of them at Ayers Ryeleside Elementary School will be the one. The city of Beverly is committed to sustainable efforts that increase our environmental stewardship and reduce harmful carbon emissions. Electric vehicles are becoming increasingly popular and charging stations are eco-friendly amenity that attract people to our city, which benefits our businesses. In addition, the electric vehicle charging stations represent a new revenue stream for the city. Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant earmark, donation or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant by taking action on this matter at your March fifteen, twenty-twenty-one meeting. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Ms. Barrett? Our Director of Brands is still here?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, President Guanci. I actually wrote and submitted this grant on behalf of the city to acquire a level-two electric vehicle charging stations. If you build it, they will come. Electric vehicles are increasing significantly in demand and we're going to need the infrastructure for people to be able to charge them. And this particular grant is given out where there's a built-in workforce. And so the high school and Ayers School have a significant amount of employees. And so we submitted the grant for those two locations to start. And we, I'll let Mayor Cahill chime in on this strategy behind the EV charging stations. But we did present to the school committee as well. Because I think the goal is to have EV charging stations at all of our schools, all eight, as well as a couple of the city parks. So we were happy to get this grant. And I'll let Mayor Cahill say a couple of words if he'd like to chime in.
Thanks, Ms. Barrett. Yeah, I'll just say, the challenge is to build and not overbuild. You know, that's, that's why you see one station and, and you can, you can actually charge two vehicles at each station. That's why they're called dual port. But that's why you only see one station at Ayers. The high school with a much larger parking capacity and both some of the older students driving cars as well as the staff, you know, as a candidate to accommodate more initially. So this is an ongoing effort. We're looking at, you know, we've evaluated the other school sites. We also very much want to get some sites in at Lynch Park as soon as we can. There's some, you know, the electrical service needs to be upgraded and, and brought to the parking lot fully. But at any rate, this, this here, fantastic, we're really excited about it. And the next one that we'll be asking you to, to accept is, is really paired with this. Right? This is the state one and the next one's the grid match.
Yes, exactly, Mayor.
Which, which together pay most of the cost and then the cost to the city is very modest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Anybody have any questions or comments on this one? I would entertain a motion to accept the grant on order number fifty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Interroll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes, and I think Mr. Pierce is back on the line with us. Mr. Pierce, are you there? Unmute. Wow, we've never really had this much of a problem.
I think it's because it's the Ides of March, Mr. President.
Star, there's something, you have to press something to unmute on the phone and I can't remember what it is. Star.
Star six.
Press star six.
Okay.
Do you want me to go to order fifty-six?
Why don't we go to order number, I just wanted to say something. Council Flowers said it's the Ides of March. And I saw somebody on Facebook today had a bottle of dressing with a knife stuck through it. Thought it was pretty, I thought it was pretty ingenious. All right, it's order number fifty-six.
Order number fifty-six. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a hundred and twelve thousand dollar, fifty-dollar grant from the National Grid Electric Vehicle Charging Infrastructure Program to install five electric vehicle charging stations located at Beverly High School and Ayers Ryeleside Elementary School. The city of Beverly is committed to sustainable efforts that increase our environmental stewardness and reduce harmful carbon emissions. Electric vehicles are becoming increasingly popular and charging stations are eco-friendly amenity that attract people to our city, which benefits our businesses. In addition, the electric vehicle charging station represents a new revenue stream for the city. Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant earmark, donation or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant by taking action on this matter at your March fifteen, twenty-twenty-one meeting. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Ms. Barrett, on this one, before we go to some questions from councilors?
Yes, this is a complimentary grant to the previous grant from EVIP. And this one awarded substantially more funding, which, as the mayor mentioned previously, will cover about ninety-five percent of the costs of installing the charging stations at the high school in Ayers. So we were really excited to get this grant a lot, along with the EVIP grant.
Thank you. Councilor Copeland has a question.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Couple of questions. One, is this going to be primarily the strategy for these stations? We're looking towards grants. I know the mayor said that we're looking to, to grow and get in other places, different parks and so forth. Is that the strategy we're looking at?
Well, at, at present, we're always looking to see whether these programs will be extended. And, and then we try to take advantage of them. And, and I would hope that they will be. I mean, these, these type of incentives coming from the utility and from the state together really, really help make it affordable to get started. I'd say the answer is as much as possible, we're going to use grants. And, you know, and then we also know that there are private entities interested in, in trying to come and rent, you know, rent space in our, in our lots to, to do their own business. But thus far, this is, seems to be a good model.
Thank you. And the, I know there's another one that's over in Walgreens. Is that privately owned? Is that part of the city?
I believe, yeah, I believe that's privately owned.
And then a final question, as far as you mentioned potential revenue stream, do we have an idea of what we're projected at for that? With the charging stations?
I don't believe we've set the rates for these stations yet, but mayor, mayor might want to add in about the three that we've put in the municipal lots, those rates.
Yeah, I would say this. I wouldn't say certainly at the outset that, you know, we're, we're looking for these to be real, real moneymakers. I mean, we're, we want to make sure that it's the EV owner who pays the cost of the electricity to charge their battery, not the city. So, you know, we'll, we'll be trying to track, you know, the, the electric rates and set our own rates that, that will charge them. You know, might there be a premium as, as time goes on? I mean, I think we'll kind of, we'll kind of feel our way there. Because I think the combination of the electricity that needs to be paid for and the annual fee that we'll be paying to the owner of the charging stations themselves. And that's another complicated set of relationships there, but ChargePoint is the, the largest presence in, in the industry right now. So looking at, at those two things and trying to make sure that the rate we land on will cover those at a minimum. Whether, whether it generates revenue for the city as well remains to be seen. I'm, we don't really, it's a new industry for us too, right? It's a new, so we'll see on that front. But certainly we'll, we'll calculate that to make sure that there's no cost to us at a minimum.
All right, perfect. Yeah, I wasn't sure if it was based off of kind of solar, solar power that, and whatever we have stored, we sell back to the grid or something of, of that nature. So that's what my question was getting at there.
Thank you. You're right, there, there are a lot of possible layers here. With, with these specific ones, it's strictly the charger. There's, there's not a, there's not a solar canopy that comes specifically with those or anything like that.
All right, all right, perfect. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Ms. Barrett. Thank you, Council President.
Council Rotundo?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, whoever wants to say no to grant money, so I definitely am grateful for that. But the question that kind of stuck to me just now was, Mr. May said there was a modest amount, a little amount of money that had to be done, ninety-five percent, I believe. Ms. Barrett had said. So with that figure, do you know what the exact upfront cost of the city is? And then the other question to that is, without getting too specific, because I know we've had these conversations in the public lot. Are we using that same model to maintain these or are we taking the control of maintenance of these stations on this school property?
Do you want me to take that, Mayor? So the, I think you're muted, Mayor.
No, please go right ahead.
Okay, so the city will own these stations and we will be responsible for the maintenance of the stations and the tracking of the data. And we also do that at the EV stations at the middle school and the three municipal lots. We track that data through ChargePoint. All, I believe all the EV stations we've purchased to date on behalf of the city are from ChargePoint. So that sort of streamlines it and makes it easier for us to track data and usage and, and then set our rates. I think that answered your question.
That was the maintenance. How about the upfront cost? Do you know, do you have a figure for that yet?
So I believe all of the actual installation work is being done by our Public Services Department. I think, I think Commissioner Collins has left the meeting. I don't see him any longer. But so we're, we significantly reduce the costs of the project by keeping it sort of in-house with our public services staff. I mean, I can get you specific numbers about what the cost is to the city. It was very nominal. Particularly the high school one is, I think was, close to ninety-eight percent costs were covered between the two grants. Ayers was a little bit more of a cost to the city because it's only one dual-port charging station. The more you put in, the more National Grid and EVIP cover. But we didn't, as the mayor said earlier, we didn't want to overbuild at Ayers at this point, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Council Hausmann.
Yes, just briefly to Ms. Barrett, or the mayor, I suppose. I, I assume that these two grants together, the previous one and this one, that they show up together is not coincidental, that this is some kind of program. Could you just elaborate a little bit on that? That's really my only question. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Hausmann. So these are actually two separate grant programs, but we applied in tandem because when you apply to the National Grid Make Ready Program, if you apply in tandem to the EVIP program and you're awarded, you get more money from National Grid. And so it's very advantageous to cities and towns to apply to both programs to get as much of the funding of the project covered. So that's why they're, they're showing up together. They were awarded, I want to say they were awarded about three weeks apart. So that was the goal, to, to see if we could get as much funding through the two programs and maximize our National Grid funding by applying to EVIP as well.
Thank you. So, so there is something about internal to each program that does try to tie in with the other then in some fashion? Not simply on our part, but, but they sort of look to each other in a sense?
I would say National Grid makes it very advantageous financially for you to seek funding from the state at the same time as you apply to National Grid. They'll, they'll award you more grant money if you can get a state grant for the project. And so, so yeah, we, it was recommended that we apply for, for the EVIP grant along with the National Grid grant at the same time. And we work very closely with, we have several National Grid representatives for the city and one of them is sort of dedicated to electric vehicle charging stations. And so we work very, very closely with her on different sustainability efforts to maximize the funding that we can receive from National Grid for projects.
Okay, thank you for explaining that. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Council Hausmann. Mayor Cahill has his hand up.
Thanks, Mr. President. I, I'm trying to provide a good answer to Councilor Rotundo in terms of the cost to the city. When you take the two grants together, we got a hundred thirty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars in grants. Again, assuming you accept them here, that leaves roughly eighty-five hundred dollars in cost to the city. So it's, it's a, it's a great deal. And then as, as Ms. Barrett said, I, I don't know how much of that eighty-five hundred can be saved with our own local install, but, but certainly that's a, that's a great number. All in all, a great percentage in terms of other sources providing the funding.
Thank you. That's actually much, Claire. I appreciate that.
Thank you both. Any other questions or comments? Hearing no further questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to approve, accept the grant.
So moved.
Second.
Interroll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
I am yes. Thank you. Now we are on order number fifty-seven, Ms. Kent.
Order number fifty-seven. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a seventeen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two, seventy-three cent grant from the Mass Department of Public Health for the Fire and Police Departments to purchase naloxone and related medical supplies to respond to opiate crisis-related calls. This grant award amount represents the final grant allegation that will be awarded during FY twenty-one. Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant earmark, donation or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant by taking action on this matter at the March fifteen, twenty-twenty-one meeting. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. And I know that obviously Ms. Barrett is here, but also Chief LaLasha is here. Ms. Barrett?
Thank you, President Guanci. So I do work closely with Sergeant Panjwani in the Police Department. And this grant was going to be originally given out sort of piecemeal each month, a roughly a couple thousand dollars. And they did that for a month or two, and now they decided to give us all the naloxone funding at once, which is great. This is a really important grant. This saves lives and, you know, we're really grateful to the Department of Public Health for it. And I'll, I'll pass it off to Chief LaLasha to say a few words about this grant as well.
I believe this is the fifth year we've been awarded this grant. Again, NOKIN has a shelf life, so it does have to be replaced if not used. Unfortunately, it gets used a lot, but it does have to be replaced. And also, this grant helps with the training of the firefighters and police officers in the city. So, it covers both sides of the supply and training.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions or comments on this grant? Well, thank you both. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the grant on order number 57.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Housman?
Yes.
Rayan?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. Uh, order number 58, Ms. Kent.
Order number 58. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a $5,950 grant from the Mass Councils on Aging, which will benefit our Council on Aging. This grant will fund a food insecurity program for distribution twice per month at the Beverly Senior Center. The Council on Aging plans to partner with different local restaurants and food trucks to provide healthy nutritious meals for senior citizens. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A requires both City Council and Mayor approval before any grant earmarked, donation, or gift to the city can be extended for a prescribed purpose. I therefore request the City Council approve this grant at your upcoming, upcoming meeting on Monday, March 15, 2021. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. And we have Ms. Barrett, and we also have Mary Ann Holak. Director of the Council on Aging is here. Ms. Barrett?
Thanks, President Guanci. These, this grant and the next grant were submitted by our Director of the Senior Center, Mary Ann Holak. They support our seniors, particularly during COVID-19 over the last 12 months. It's been a very, very challenging period. And we're really grateful for both of these grants. They're wonderful, wonderful programs that will benefit our senior citizens. And I'll let Mary Ann Holak say a few words about both of them.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello, President Guanci, and, and the rest of the team. I am so happy that we've received these grants because the last year has been very tough. And my staff has worked through the whole pandemic, really reaching out and trying to help as many people as we could. And you could just see it in the faces of all of us. We were tired. We were, you know, exhausted, and we really wanted to do something fun. So, when these short-term grants came out, I brainstormed with the staff and said, let's try to find some fun programming, because we have to spend the money by June 30. So, they're not long-term programs, but they kind of fill a gap before we can really get back to business. And we love programming. And so, this first one is, seven different times, we'll be providing seven takeout restaurant, 25 takeout restaurant meals to seniors. It'll be a grab-and-go event. And we'll also be sending them home with a bag of fresh produce for the weekend, kind of like the school model where they send the kids home with food for the weekend. And I, you know, we're all sick of cooking at home for ourselves, right? And so, we want to, you know, perk up everybody's taste buds and hopefully help the restaurants as well. So, that's going to be a fun program for us to implement. And then, the next grant is a smaller grant, but, and we were going to do it even if we didn't get the funding. But now with the funding, we can even have some more fun with it. We're doing a weekly Walk in the Woods program for 12 weeks, starting in April. We'll do a different trail in Beverly and introduce up to 12 seniors to those trails. Hopefully, we're going to find some emerging leaders in that group of seniors who will want to continue leading walks on the wonderful trails that we have in Beverly. And, you know, what we've heard from seniors is they don't go out on the trails on their own because they're not familiar with them. So, this is a way to help people get familiar with our beautiful trails, maybe meet some new friends, get outside again after being quarantined. And, and don't you worry, we're going to send you all the schedule and invite you all to come on a walk with us. So, hopefully, you'll accept and come on one of the walks with us. The nice thing about this is that the Open Space and Recreation Committee are very excited about it and want to help us. And a couple have already volunteered to lead some of the walks. So, and we have a high school intern who is actually going to school to be a civil engineer. So, he's going to go out on some of those trails and scope them out for us and call it his internship. So, we're really excited about it. And I hope you'll, you'll approve those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. You said, your enthusiasm is so heartwarming.
It's been a hard year. We've been trying.
What you've gone through over the past year. And it's, it's so great that you've kept, you've kept the place running and you can reach out to the seniors. Council Feldman?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to really commend you because I have gotten all of the updates from the Senior Center, and I do read them. And I'm just, I've been so impressed with, I haven't been able to reach out individually, but I've been really impressed with how hard, it's apparent how hard you and your staff have worked during this pandemic to really connect with the most vulnerable, the most, you know, that are the most isolated and the most vulnerable because of this health crisis. So, I really, I'm so grateful our city has you and our seniors have you because you've really been such a gift to the city. So, I'm really excited. I'll go on all your walks in the woods because.
Yay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Anybody else? Hearing no further questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to accept the grant on order number 58.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Housman?
Yes.
Rayan?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. We already talked about order number 59, but Ms. Kent, could you read that so we can vote on that one also?
Order number 59. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a $1,878 grant from the Mass Council on Aging, which will benefit our Council on Aging. This grant will fund a new 13-week A Walk in the Woods program that includes group walks led by senior center staff and Open Space and Recreation Committee members in reading the book, A Walk in the Woods by Bill Bryson. The goal of this program is improve mental health, exercise, and a reduction of social isolation during the current public health pandemic for our senior citizens. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A requires both City Council and Mayor approval before any grant, earmarked, donation, or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the City Council approve this grant at your upcoming meeting on March 15, 2021. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Ms. Barrett, anything to add?
No, I just hope the council approves this grant. And I just wanted to say thank you to Mary Ann and the staff at the Senior Center for all their hard work on both of these grants that will benefit our seniors.
Great. Good stuff. I would entertain a motion to approve the grant on order number 59.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Housman?
Yes.
Rayan?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
I am a yes. And Mayor Cahill just let me know that he spoke with Mr. Pierce, and we're ready to try again on order number 67. Mr. Pierce, it's all you. On mute, please. I just have the directions here.
Star six.
Hit star six on your phone. That should unmute you and allow you to speak.
Mr. President, he did say that he tried star six a couple times before. He and I agreed that if, if he can't make it work here, I was going to give him a call, put him on speaker, and hold him up to the microphone. If that's okay with you folks?
Of course, it's fine.
Want to try that? Okay.
Try you. Hello, Mr. Pierce. This is Mayor Cahill.
Hey, Robert. You ready to try it this way? You there? Robert? Oh, my.
He needs to hang up here.
Okay, all right. Now, just so you know, Mr. Pierce and I may together be more challenged technologically than he was on his own, because I'm not sure where to hold this phone. Robert, you want to speak? Just say hi to everybody, see if they can hear you?
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, they can.
Okay, well, again, I apologize for all of this extra trouble I'm causing tonight with my technology problems. So, I will be brief. And to tell you a little bit about myself, my wife and I have been Beverly residents.
Robert, you there? All right, we heard you and your wife are Beverly residents, but then it went a little haywire. Hang on. Robert, do me a favor. You, I think if, I think you leave, I think you need to leave the meeting.
Yeah, at least it just.
I made him leave. I removed him.
Okay, good. All right, let me get him again. I think that that's starting to cause some feedback.
Hello?
All right, let's try again. We removed you from the meeting. I think that's where the feedback was coming in.
Oh, okay.
Everybody heard you start to say when you and Mrs. Pierce first moved to Beverly, and then it went sideways. So, here you are.
Okay. Can you hear me again?
Yeah, everybody hears you.
Okay, again, I'm sorry. So, I was about to say that my wife and I have been Beverly residents for the past 19 years. I'm a retired federal civil service manager with more than 40 years of military and civilian service. I served in the Army for three years of that time. Since my retirement, I have had continued involvement in public service. I'm a member of the Coast Guard Auxiliary. I served as flotilla commander of the Beverly Flotilla for a couple of years. I'm currently president of the Massachusetts Federation of the National Active and Retired Federal Employees Association, an organization that we call NARF. And I'm interested in this position because I'm a big believer in civic engagement and public participation. So, this position with the Board of Registars would be a way for me to continue to make a contribution to my community. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Let's see if you're going to get off the hook quickly. Do you, anybody have any questions? Or can we move right along and say thank you, and then we'll vote on this at our Committee on Public Services meeting, which will be held on the 29th? Sounds great. So, please refer that to the Committee on Public Services. Mayor Cahill, please extend our thanks to Mr. Pierce for being here. And we'll have Ms. Kent invite him to the Public Services meeting on the 29th. Anyway, just in case.
Great. Thanks.
Sounds good. And thanks, everybody, for their patience. That, at least it added something a little interesting to our meeting, correct?
Correct.
First time we had the mayor call somebody and then put the phone up to our meeting.
That's a bad idea.
Okay, that was order 67. We referred it to the Committee on Public Services. Now, we are on order number 60.
Order number 60. Dear Honorable City Council, attached for your consideration is a proposed order declaring that the rooftop and parking lot of the new police station at 175 Elliott Street are available for leasing and installation of solar panel arrays and associated power purchasing agreements. I respectfully request that the City Council take action on this order at the meeting of the City Council on March 15, 2021. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Mayor Cahill, we're putting you to work tonight.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. So, I mean, we've been talking about this for some time. It's been our collective goal to build the closest thing we can to a net zero or carbon neutral building here. And the geothermal heating and cooling system is a big piece of it. And then the, of course, that's also going to be electrically powered. And the, the rooftop and parking lot canopy solar as a way to help try to create clean renewables to help get us closer to carbon neutral. So, in order for us to move forward with that, the City Council, as, as the legislative body, needs to agree and take a vote to that effect.
Uh, any questions for Mayor Cahill on this one? Council Ames?
Just, do you have any idea on just the revenue effect, one way or another, that this will have in terms of the solar array on the police station, just generally for the city? Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Sure. What we've learned about the solar projects in, in the state under the SMART program is that there's a potential that there's some revenue that comes from, well, there should be revenue coming from whoever responds to this, because, you know, they'll, they'll be owning the, the panels, and they'll be leasing space of ours to do so. So, the hope is that there's going to be a decent amount of revenue. I will say that we found in working with the contractor who, who we awarded the RFP to on the several site project that we're working on now, the middle and high school, city hall, senior center rooftop, there's a number of arrays, that some of the costs that are being visited upon the project by National Grid, some of the infrastructure increases that they're requiring, infrastructure improvements are adding to the cost of the project. So, it won't be clear until we RFP it, and maybe even after that, it won't be fully clear until, until whoever we award that bid to goes through what's known as the Interconnection Service Agreement process, where they apply to National Grid. National Grid makes them look at, at, you know, what they're adding to load and what the capabilities are of the grid infrastructure, most that connect to that address and that site. So, some of it is still, you know, unclear until you get further into the process. But the hope and expectation is that there'll be a, you know, there'll be a contract, and they'll pay some rent. I do want to say also that we, you know, when we look at these projects, we always want to generate our own electricity and behind the grid, use it to power our own operations on site. And unfortunately, the incentives in the state program, the SMART program, seem to lead us to the, in front of the grid every time, because the incentives for the developer, you know, the money that they're able to take advantage of seems to push us in front of the grid. So, you know, I think that's likely to happen here as well. So, we would actually be exporting that clean energy created into the grid, and we would be bringing our, you know, our own electricity from the grid. Nonetheless, it's still, you know, you, you do the calculations, and you look and see what you're able to generate, and you, you know that, you know, we're doing our part in helping to, to provide more long-term renewable energy to our overall, you know, shared needs around the region.
Thank you very much. I just, once you understand it, it would be great if you could come back to us with how it turns out. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. And, you know, we, we can certainly come back as well with an update on the multi-site project as we're still working through the, you know, finalizing those ISAs with grid and seeing how that impacts everything. But, you know, we're hoping that all that construction, again, separate set of projects, we're hoping that, you know, we're a lot closer to construction, and that'll be happening later this calendar year. But thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council Copeland?
Thank you, Council President. I believe Council Rotundo might have raised his hand before I put, no, okay, you're good. Thank you. My question is, as far as our solar grid, how far have we advanced? I've noticed that Tesla has some storage units as far as the solar power. Have we gotten into any of that, or started to think towards that way, so that way we can power the buildings kind of 24/7?
Hmm. So, first, we'd have to be able to do something behind the grid, so that, that ability to take the power you generate and use it on site, and then take some of what you generate and don't need during the day and store it in batteries to use on site. It remains to be seen what of that we'll be able to do with these local sites in the near term. Battery storage, you know, more universally, every, you know, there are a lot of, there are a lot of people researching how to, how to get more out of batteries. It's, it's a big piece of the, if you look at, you know, more broadly and even more, more globally, one of the things that is going to help us to electrify significant parts of how we power things, because the way we burn fossil fuels is in power. significant parts of how we power things, because the way we burn fossil fuels is empowering everything. You know, power our, our, our transportation system, um, power our buildings, heating and cooling and, and lighting, uh, power how we, how we grow agriculture, how we build product. It's, it's all of that. So it's not the only answer, but a, a significant piece of the answer is to create more clean electricity and then to electrify more things. So it's, it's a movement that's going to take years, and it's, it's happening, you know, all across systems. How much battery storage can help us with what are known as intermittent power sources? When, when the wind's not blowing, you know, windmills don't give you much. When the sun isn't shining, solar doesn't give you much. So to the extent that intermittent sources can be harnessed and, and stored in batteries and then used during times when that intermittent source isn't generating, that's a big piece of it, and it's, you know, it's not just our own. Certainly, we're interested in, you know, we, there, there, there are batteries that are being, um, purchased as part of a, a couple of the larger arrays in that multi-site, the middle school and high school, uh, sites specifically. And, and so we'll see how we, we in the near term as our developer who, who's working with us and, you know, leasing the space, how we and they are able to store more and, and export more to the grid in the, in the near term, because that's where the, that's where the incentives of the whole program has, have brought us today. I don't know if that's helpful. I'm, I'm a little bit off the cuff, but I, I think, I think it probably speaks to the fact that we should come to you with that larger multi-site, uh, project and, 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 you know, share some of where we're, where we're at in the near future.
Yeah, definitely would have, love to have a better understanding of that and, and what that looks like. Uh, and one final question, as far as, uh, you're talking about with the police station. So we're going to be leasing that space, and then whoever's using the, the solar panels, they're going to be, uh, recouping the money for that energy? Is that how it works?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Council Copeland. Great questions. And Mayor Cahill, good job on that one.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Hearing no further questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to approve the mayor's request on order number 60.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes. Order number 61.
Order number 61. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby reappoint, subject to your review and recommendation, the following residents to serve on the Veterans Advisory Committee. Mr. Charles Real, Mr. Paul Weinberg, and Mr. Susan Moran. Their terms are to be effective until March 1st, 2024. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services. 62.
Order number 62. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby reappoint, subject to your review and recommendation, the following residents to serve on the Waste Reduction Committee. Mr. John Swain and Ms. Sandy Burgess. Their terms are to be effective until March 31st, 2024. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services.
Order number 63. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby reappoint, subject to your review and recommendation, Ms. Caroline Beard-Mason and Ms. Wendy Pearl of Beverly to serve as members of the Beverly